Stand for the Pledge of Legions. Put a flag.
What was it?
It wasn't you. Oh, it's my first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. The true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vicki, will you take a roll call?
I can't hear you. I don't think your mic is on, Mr. Chair.
Mic check.
Testing.
Here.
Senator Bernard.
Here.
Senator Harrell.
Here.
Senator Polsky. Representative Caruso.
Here.
Representative Casello.
Here.
Representative Edmonds.
Present.
Representative Gerwig.
Here.
Representative Gossett Seipman.
Here.
Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Snyder. Representative Tendrich.
Here.
Representative Weinberger.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vicki. I'd like to welcome you all here to the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Local Bill and Public Hearing and thank Kaiser University for allowing us to use them. So, I would like to introduce and come up and say opening remarks our newly elected County Commissioner, District Seven Commissioner Bobby Powell.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I thought I had stage fright. Good morning, everybody. Of course, I am Bobby Powell Jr., the current County Commissioner for District Seven here in Palm Beach County. I am glad that you all are joining us in District Seven. I had an opportunity earlier. I saw Ms. Belinda Kaiser. Being here at the flagship campus for Kaiser University is amazing, right in the center of the district. There are a lot of great things that are happening at this institution. I also participate in one of the 5Ks that happens in April. It's Run with the Cops or it's, I don't actually, it's not Run with the Cops, one of the runs where you get an opportunity to run with cops. If y'all want to do a 5K with me in April, it'll be right here at this campus. I'm just throwing it out there for those who are interested. But I welcome you all as the delegation. This is my first time addressing the delegation from this side of the podium. My staff would normally be with me this morning. Diane Andre is en route. Malcolm Summons is participating in leadership Palm Beach County. But we are here, of course, to be assistants of assistance to you, to collaborate and work with you all as the delegation. As you all know, as the former chair of this delegation, Palm Beach County has the best delegation in the state of Florida of the 67 counties. And we know that you all will continue that, right? With that being said, I want to leave you all with this reminder that when you go to Tallahassee, you are there to get involved, to serve, to work hard, to work with each other for Palm Beach County, to bring back the goods for Palm Beach County with our awesome delegation team that goes with you. A life of service is a life that counts. When you serve the people, you're serving the world. Welcome to County Commission District Seven.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. I might add, following you on Facebook, I see struggles doing those 5K races. Take it easy, sir.
Thank you, Representative Casello. As you know, with life, if there's no struggle, there's no reward. It's not supposed to be easy, but at the end of the day, you're going to get the job done. Life is a series of hills and valleys. Sometimes you're on the hill, sometimes you're in the valley, and on those 5Ks, on that downside, on that backside, that's what we call the valley. Come join me in the valley.
Representative Caruso. Commissioner, Commissioner, you're not getting away that early, that easy. So, what church do you attend? Because I want to come here, you preach.
I am a pastor. Thank you for asking. I attend Grace Temple CME where the pastor is Reverend Aaron L. Moss, right in the city of West Palm Beach, which is also in District Seven. You're more than welcome to come. We will have a Family and Friends Day. I will invite the entire delegation. I'm looking forward to you all coming, and I recognize you all as my colleagues. You know, this is my first time being on this side, so I kind of miss y'all.
We're family, Commissioner.
I miss you.
We're family. We miss you.
It was good seeing you yesterday. Thank you for your fight with regard to mental health. That's a big issue for us at the county, mental health, mental illness, mental wellness, healthcare, of course, economic development, housing. Those are some issues that are near and dear to us. We have to fight to make sure that we have housing that's workforce, housing that's affordable, housing that is for home ownership as well. So, you all will go there and get it done. I want to recognize as well my colleague who actually replaced me. You all may know this, Mac Bernard, County Commissioner at the, well, he was a county commissioner. I'm his county commissioner replacement. But he was a state representative way back when I was a young man. Story goes, I had no gray hairs, full head of hair. I might even had a half of them. And I had the opportunity to work for young Mac Bernard, and he went on to become a county commissioner and now a state senator, serving in the upper chamber. And as you all know, when you cross the threshold from the House to the Senate, the air changes. True story, true story. The air changes.
It's gassier.
You walk a little bit different, and that's why they call it the upper chamber.
All the fun ends in the Senate.
The fun ends in the Senate. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bobby. Love you. Next, we'll have the Belinda Kaiser, the Vice Counselor of this great assembly. Belinda?
So, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Vonk and I will welcome you this morning to our flagship campus and to Kaiser University. It's truly an honor, and Senator and Commissioner Bobby Powell very well said. And sir, do you run as well?
Hi, everybody. I'm Gary Vonk here. I'm the president. I recognize some of you because we've been blessed with the opportunity for you to share with us your thoughts during our graduations, and hopefully many more of you would come to our graduations here on campus. We have about 1,500 students here on campus. Half of them come from Palm Beach County, the other third of them come from all over the world, 42 countries, with 46 states and the state of the U.S. that come to this campus, and with one goal in mind, and that's graduation. We really, truly focus on that. You'll see banners of national championships all over this country. We've got the largest number of national championships in the United States for college. We just finished national championships in football and finished second this year. But I welcome you all. I welcome you all. For those who have been here many times, and those of you who it's your first visit, please come see us. We're happy to do it. We love to host you on the campus, and we love to make sure that this isn't your last time on campus. So, I welcome. I'd like to introduce to Belinda Kaiser, who is all over the state and really, truly serving not only the university, but the students that we have, that truly do make up the workforce in the state of Florida. And I'll leave you with a quote I can't miss saying, and it is a quote I say, I quote many times, "As children are the living messages we send to a time we will not see." And if we remember that every time we work with interacting with our students, we'll truly be successful. So, here's Belinda Kaiser. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vonk. So, to all of you, our Palm Beach delegation, and all of our guests today, from Kaiser University, which consists of 20,000 students and 4,000 team members, we're very grateful. You'll hear a little bit about our growth and how we serve, but we started almost 50 years ago, and we are a Florida story. And we thank all of you because your leadership has made a difference. We listen every day to employer needs, and employers tell us what they need. We produce roughly 3,000 nurses per year, and here's what we've learned. The world is constantly changing. So, when the community tells us what they need, our 19 campuses respond based on their input. But we also know that's only possible because our leadership is strong. And we also have seen that Florida, in so many ways, is the envy of other states, and they're certainly moving to Florida at record numbers. We see them in the restaurants. We certainly see them on the, on I-95 and the turnpike. So, I, without further delay, let me also say, we have the honor of serving the Senate. So, we have nursing and IT and cyber and many, and criminal justice, 100 different degrees, all the way to the PhD level. But we also have three culinary schools. And I want you to know that Senator Harrell, I've heard, is an excellent cook and even a more effective legislator. So, please join me in enjoying the video of Kaiser University. And remember, we do much more than cook.
Founded in 1977, we've grown to 19 campuses in Florida. We proudly serve over 20,000 students and 100,000 alumni. Today, Kaiser University is Florida's largest private nonprofit university. We're accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. We have over 100 different programs from associate to doctoral degrees. The university's economic impact in the state of Florida is more than $3 billion annually and results in more than 30,000 direct and indirect jobs. Kaiser University has been ranked number one in the U.S. for social mobility by U.S. News and World Report and is one of the largest producers of nurses in Florida. The university is a designated Hispanic-serving institution and a member of the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. In 2022, Kaiser University was named to Forbes List of the Most Financially Sustainable Universities in America, and it's a seven-time winner of the Catalyst Award for Online Education. Since 1977, inherent in our mission is service to the community. The university's philosophy has always been students first. In just the last two years, Kaiser University has awarded more than $76 million in scholarships to military needs-based and academic-deserving students. Kaiser University.
Now, we're going to have, excuse me, a little presentation. As you all know, it's been a couple of months now, we lost three brave men, deputies, on a highway, tragic accident. The, so, we're going to pay tribute. These tributes are presented to the families of Corporal P.I.s, deputies Waller, Indias, from the legislators of Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. We honor them in recognition of their brave service to our community. Officers know that each time they put on the uniform, they are taking on the risk to protect others and understand the hazards that entails. These deputies are modern-day heroes, and these tributes are a delegation way of recognizing our fallen heroes. I might add, I know the deputies, the police service, the pain you're feeling. I was a firefighter for over 30 years, first responder. We had, we lost a group of men in a fire, and I know that pain ever, never goes away, but the memories will stay with us forever. So, at this time, I'd like the deputies to come up, and we'd like to present those, them with the tributes. freshman deputy in Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Corporal Lewis Piaz later transferred to Road Patrol, according to the statement from the sheriff's office, served passionately as a motor deputy for more than 20 years, training numerous deputies and becoming a crucial mentor within the unit, known for his professional guidance and wisdom. And whereas the longtime friend, colleague, Mayor Paul Victor called Corporal Lewis Piaz Jr. an exceptional wingman for many passions and said of Piaz, he loved his family and friends. He loved photography and nature, and he's all loved motorcycles and travel. And whereas the skilled motorcycle Corporal Lewis Piaz took multiple trips on motorcycle visits various national parks across the United States and to Canada, according to Motor Major Boeckner, was a very talented motorcycle instructor who instruction has helped countless riders avoid crashes and injuries. And whereas Corporal Lewis Piaz Jr. was involved in numerous state and national photography organizations, served as the president of the Florida Professional Photographers, made photography friends throughout the country. And whereas, because of his kindness, vibrant personality, and cheerful, Corporal Piaz has been called by his friends a great guy and fight for fire lives, always fun to be around. Now, therefore, be it respected and proclaimed that Corporal Lewis Piaz Jr. is remembered for his love for his family and friends, for his lasting legacy in his 36 years of law enforcement, his dedication and service to his community. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for Deputy Sheriff Ignacio Diaz. Whereas in 2004, Deputy Sheriff Ignacio Dan Diaz began his law enforcement career at the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, showcasing exceptional service throughout his tenure. And whereas Deputy Sheriff Diaz served in multiple districts during the course of his public service career, demonstrating a deep understanding of the needs of each community. And whereas in 2008, Deputy Sheriff Diaz joined the DUI unit where his significant contributions to combating drunk driving are numerous accolades. And whereas in 2014, Deputy Sheriff Diaz transferred to the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Motor Unit where he excelled as a motorcycle deputy with unmatched tenacity and skill. And whereas Deputy Sheriff Diaz, known for his laugh, kindness, and dedication, has had a lasting impact on the communities in which he has served and his fellow colleagues, earning a legacy marked by profound commitment to public service and duty. Now, therefore, be it respectfully proclaimed that Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Ignacio Diaz is honored for his commitment to public service and dedication to public safety in the rule
A tribute to Deputy Sheriff Ralph Butch Waller Jr. Whereas Deputy Waller was born in 1970 in Lakeland, and whereas Ralph Waller graduated from Lakeland Senior High School, studied at Hillsborough Community College, and attended the Law Enforcement Academy. And whereas in 1998, Ralph Waller started his law enforcement career at the Royal Palm Beach Police Department and later served in that department's first motor unit. And whereas in 2006, Ralph Waller became a deputy with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and served in the sheriff's motor unit. And whereas Deputy Waller was known for his love of motorcycle duty and his infectious smile, a friend to everyone, and always ready to assist those in need. And whereas on November 21st, 2024, Deputy Waller was one of three Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office deputies fatally struck by a vehicle along a highway while conducting traffic enforcement on Southern Boulevard. Now, therefore, be it respectfully proclaimed that Deputy Sheriff Ralph Butch Waller Jr. is honored for his life and his exemplary service to the community. Signed by Chair Casello.
On behalf of the outstanding men and women that you see standing in front of you, and from Sheriff Bradshaw, we say thank you very much for this wonderful honor and the proclamations. These are three men who are still desperately missed from the sheriff's office, and we thank you all for being here, and this is a wonderful honor. And a very belated, happy, and healthy new year to all of you and to the districts and the community that you represent. Thank you, Representative.
We all could get to take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
We all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We all could take a picture. Y'all could come out for a picture, please?
We would love to.
Y'all could take a picture. Y'all would have a good night. Thank you. We've got property appraiser here with us, Ms. Dorothy Jax.
Thank you, and good morning. It's always a pleasure to come and speak to you briefly before the beginning of each session. I'm Dorothy Jax, your county property appraiser, and I have enjoyed working with many of you and look forward to meeting some of the newer members of the delegation. Our office, of course, is completely run by the Florida statutes and do our rules and regulations, so I'm always here just discussing various measures that we have coming before you, and I will be with you personally in February and plan to come and see you in your offices in Tallahassee, and I can happily answer some more questions. I did just want to begin, we have a couple of bills that are coming forward regarding exemptions. This, one would allow those that receive a total exemption from property taxes because they're quadriplegic to be able to pass that exemption to their spouse when they pass away. That's important, just when you think about it, if somebody has had not to pay any property tax because of that level of disability, and then the person who has the disability passes, at the moment, it doesn't pass to the surviving spouse. A lot of our exemptions do that already. The quadriplegic would be one that we would add that benefit to. We also are looking to lower the age that a combat-disabled veteran can receive an exemption from property taxes based on their combat-related disability. So right now, you have to be over 65, but with the veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan, we hope that some of those are younger, that we can remove the 65-year-old limit to that. Again, it relates to having a combat disability that's been confirmed and approved by the VA, so it's not a large number of people it impacts, but it certainly would help those that have disabilities from combat. We're also going to continue this year working on a bill to ask people such as Zillow and Realtor.com to post correct property taxes on their listings, so that buyers can see what the property taxes will be should they buy a home. Right now, as you probably are aware, if you buy a home that's already homesteaded, the prior owner's taxes may be significantly lower than what you're going to pay if you buy the house, and we'd like the Zillos and others to reflect what the taxes will be as opposed to what the taxes are. We have good support on this. The Realtors are also in support of this idea, and we're working closely with them, so hopefully that can make it to the finish line this year. Representative Caruso and Senator Harrell and I are working on a bill that would extend what we call affirmative steps to charities who are in the process of developing a property. So at the moment, charities are not able to get an exemption until they begin using a property, so that may be a number of years if they're building a building, and during that time, they have to pay property taxes on their land, so we'd like to extend the ability that if they are affirmatively moving forward with building a new property, we would be able to give them an exemption on the land during that time. Those are the major things I have for this year. As always, I am very available to you by phone or email, whatever is easiest for you or your staff, if you have questions about property taxes. We have a lot of interesting information about demographics, how many people own and live in their homes, how many people are renting, these sorts of things. We're always happy to help Palm Beach County, a 650,000 parcels, and again, we're a treasure trove of data, if you're interested in anything property tax-related, or if you just simply have questions about any of the multitude of laws that govern our operation and our property tax system. I look forward to working with you. Again, as I mentioned, I'll be in Tallahassee in February, and again, I'm available to you by phone anytime you need to chat. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Right now.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dorothy. And after you get the appraisals, you'll see this individual, our own Ann Gannon, Palm Beach County Tax Collector.
Good morning. I'm sure that you all enjoyed this great cold this morning. I'm Ann Gannon, Palm Beach County Tax Collector. I've been tax collector for 24 years. Can you believe that?
No.
Yes, we added it up. Yes. And my office is responsible for issuing driver's licenses, titles and registrations, birth certificates. We do TSA in our Delray Beach office, payment of property taxes, tax certificate sale, bed tax collections, which in case the newer members don't understand, that's a critical component of what we collect. We collect about $85 million in Palm Beach County, so if you have ideas about how to change your statute, come see us before you file a bill. We also are willing and able to do tours of our office, whether it would be one of our operational offices or our administrative offices, so that you could understand how our operation operates, actually. And everything we do, of course, is based on statute or administrative law, so hopefully we won't have many of those changes this year. But I have a couple, two issues today, and I'm sure we'll have many more issues that people file. One is this bill that you have a draft up that I passed out. It relates to homestead exemption, and I'm not going to go through the whole bill because I put a very detailed explanation of what this bill does and why we're doing it, and it should, if you have questions after this, we'll be glad to do it, but evidently, we have a couple people in our county who have actually committed fraud, and we're going to change the level, the value of the property where your property taxes can be deferred. And the original statute was drafted so that people, the elderly and people who had limited ability to pay their taxes and stay in their home, it applied to them, but we've had some very clever people who are now deferring their taxes on properties that are valued over $1 million. So we want a little help with this, so that we can get back to the original intent of this, which is to help our constituents stay in their homes. And the other issue is there are going to be a number of proposals about DMV, driver's license, mostly driver's license issuing, and who collects and who does what in this whole process this year. I would ask that you call our office to see what effect it has on tax collectors before you sign onto it, or you would vote for these bills, because I reviewed one last night that, in case all of you don't understand this process with driver's licenses, our office gets $6.25 for every driver's license. That does not pay the cost of our overhead, and in fact, what happens is the property tax collections actually pay the cost of what is a state-mandated service in all of our counties statewide. We have worked for a number of years to increase to $6.25, and there may be a possibility to do that, so if you hear any whisper of that, we'd love to have a call, we'd love to work with you on that, because it would really help our county in the collection of property taxes and the taxes that we actually get to keep and spend in our county, because they're assessed against our constituents. So if anybody has any questions, and we would love our newer House members and Senate members, we'd love to be able to take you through our office and give you a tour. And the other announcement, and I don't know if many of you know, but we are building a new building in West Delray. It will come up before planning and zoning in March, and after the approval moves forward because it's being declared a public property, we should have this building completed in two and a half years, and have much more ability to serve our constituents, particularly in our western part of the county, which is where most of the people live in Palm Beach County today. So we would be glad to give you a tour of our offices, so that you could familiarize yourself with how we actually do business. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I hear Vicki telling me to go away. I see her shaking her head. That's her job. Anyhow, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann. A question, Ann? Ann, we have a question.
Madam Tax Collector.
Madam Tax Collector.
Thank you, Chair. The $1 million limit on assessed value for these exemptions, is that, is there any adjustment factor for inflation as we go on in time?
There is nothing in statute. We don't, we would not be the person who dealt with that. The property appraiser would probably deal with that, and then it would move to us. We don't adjust property for inflation. We merely send to a tax bill.
Okay. I'm referring to the statute that's being proposed.
But it's...
The bill. The bill.
It's an assessment of the just value of $1 million. Currently, hold on a minute, and I'll tell you what it is today. The property owner today can defer part or all of their property taxes or add taxes, and this is raising the limit to, I'm not sure what the limit is today.
It doesn't sound like there is one.
I don't think there is a limit today, and that's why they're imposing this limit of the $1 million.
Yes, because the intent of the statute was not to give a person who had just purchased a property for $1 million from the state of California, a deferment of their taxes until a certain age.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Joseph Ambruzzo, Clerk of Circuit Court and Controller for Palm Beach County. Joe?
Thank you, Legislative Delegation, for all your hard work and support, especially Representative Peggy Gassit-Sidman. Cannot thank yourself and Senator Polsky enough for being the main sponsors for our Jeffrey Epstein grand jury release bill on this past legislative session. I know many come in front of you, and of course, it's always funding, funding, funding. I will tell you this from the clerks, we are operating on the same budget that we have since 2007, even with our population increase. As you see on this year's legislative session, Palm Beach County is set to get four new judges, yet we have no increase in funding. We have to staff those courtrooms, so always, of course, with the clerks, it's funding, funding, funding. We do not have a set dedicated bill at the present time, because the Clerks Association has decided to move forward with a parity bill for pay raises, similar to, obviously, the sheriffs and the tax collectors coming forward. I will tell you this, every time I hear about pay raise bills, and if I could have a moment of privilege, Mr. Chairman, I think about you all. I've sat in your seats, House and Senate, the fact that you make $29,000 a year, which is titled a part-time job, which quite frankly, I'm going to speak direct as a joke, when you add together your committee weeks, along with the legislative session, you're talking about almost half the year up in Tallahassee, and then when you come home, it's not like you just go to your day job. Every night, you're away from your friends and family, going to legislative updates, meeting with constituents, writing your bills, getting set for the next legislative session, and by the way, I'm leaving elections out of it. You have a beyond full-time job. Now, I just want to add some context to that. When I came in in the mid-2000s, Representative Skidmore, your first go-around in the State House, we were together, we were the last to serve with those who were there prior to term limits. And I remember sitting with a legendary Senate president, name was Jim King, and we were discussing the pay raises, and he said, "That's on you, the Democrats, when you control the House and the Senate." You, the leadership at that time, did not want to make it a living wage, to make it harder for people to run for public office, where what type of jobs would allow you to leave half the year, and then you had to live on this low, below-living-wage income. So it was set up in a way that it would preclude people from running for public office. It wasn't good fiscal stewardship, it was to eliminate the competition. And yes, it was my party that did that, way before, obviously, I served. So I submit to you, every time I hear this, you are due for a pay raise, you need to be able to serve in your seats and have a living wage. You make less than every employee in the Florida House and the Florida Senate. It's not right, and I just have to put it out there, because I apologize, but as these bills come forward, not that the constitutional officers aren't deserving, they are, but you are as well. I wanted to speak briefly about our national debt. Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, I'm the comptroller of the county, so that means I'm the CFO and treasurer of Palm Beach County. I manage billions of our constituents' taxpayer dollars. We have to look, and we do it all in-house, by the way. We have to look at all national indicators when we make our investments and how we actively move the money, because as I mentioned, we're doing it in-house. We are sitting at over a $36 trillion national deficit, that is the most per capita in world history. When I stood in front of the delegation when I first took office, I mentioned that inflation was about to spike at that time. The Biden White House Chief of Staff, Ron Klain, tweeted out that inflation was nothing but a high-class problem. I ridiculed that in front of this board, that that was wrong, that I saw inflation coming. We moved our investments to mirror what may happen, and thank God we did, because we have had some outstanding record-breaking income that I'm about to mention. But that said, we are running at over a $2 trillion budget deficit every year, so we have a $36.5 trillion credit card bill, and if America was a business, we're earning, or we're in the red, over $2 trillion a year adding to that debt. We're paying over, for the first time in history, a trillion-dollar interest-only payment on our national debt, which is the second highest line item in the entire budget, above defense. Only Medicare, only healthcare is above what our interest-only payment is on our debt. Our interest on the debt is about to spike over the next couple of years, so it's going to get much worse. So what does that mean for inflation as you go about managing the state budget? It is not going to go down. We're just going to see little peaks and valleys, but a trickle that's going to keep going up likely for the rest of our life. So I want to keep that in mind. Now, the good news, when I took office, part of our, one of my main jobs is investing our income, as I'm saying, to earn extra income for our residents in Palm Beach County. We were averaging $27 million a year when I first took office. I reported to the County Commission, thank you Commissioner Bernard, it's our Commissioner Baxter here, we turned over a record-breaking income of $173 million last year. I'm about to report to the Commission, over $220 million for this upcoming year. A big part of that is Israeli bonds, and I see Representative Caruso here, Senator Harrell, Senator Berman, who have been massive supporters, and most of all, Commissioner Bernard, who allowed us to raise the cap, now Senator Bernard. The Israeli bond, we are the largest investors in Israel bonds in the entire world. We have $700 million invested in Israeli bonds. To put that in comparison, I've mentioned 100% of our portfolio is earning us $27 million a year. 15% of our portfolio in Israel bond is earning us $35 million a year. Trump, so 15% is trumping 100%, just three and a half short years ago. We will be coming forward with some language. I deal with lawsuits from, quite frankly, Islamic fundamental terrorist supporters, the very far-left wing of my own party. It is taxing on our office, it goes through, so I'm going to be coming forward with some language. We are okay, Florida has its own carved-out statute that local governments are allowed to invest in Israeli bonds, but we're going to tighten some things up. I appreciate all your support, and of course, open any question, and most of all, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Senator Berman, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we on? Hello? I just wanted to say thank you for your investment in Israeli bonds. I think it's, as you mentioned, it's been a really fiscally positive move for the county, and I know you have had pushback, but I think I really appreciate what you've done, and thank you for discussing our salaries. I have tried, I tried to do a bill last year, and we couldn't even get any discussion about it, but I do think it is a travesty. I have been in the legislature for 15 years, I have not gotten my rates in 15 years, and we are severely underpaid, so thank you for raising that issue.
Fairly questioned. Thank you, Joe.
Chair. Mrs. Chair. Sorry. Sorry. Clerk Ambruzzo, I want to also thank you for your investment of funds, county funds in the state of Israel. Really appreciate your support there, and all that you do. You're sounding more and more like somebody from my party, but just, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I comment?
You may.
I believe on the fiscal front, we are lockstep. When you look at the, no, I believe even President-elect Trump was, when he got a recent breakdown of where we are with the debt, was greatly concerned. We have a very serious problem coming. Hyperinflation could come. I just want to say this point, not to get too in the weeds of things. We, America, are the world currency. Which, what does that mean? We're able to borrow funds, since our dollar is the world currency, at very low rates that allow us to raise this, or keep running this historic debt. China and some of our, Russia, some of our hardcore emissaries are every day working to remove us off of the world currency. That's how our country gets beat. Not in war, not a virus, it's going to be the fiscal cliff if we lose the world currency, and what happens with hyperinflation, when then at that point, you go in the grocery store and a gallon of milk is $800. I'm not making, I know that sounds radical, but you know, it comes like Jamaican money. So we're, that's how they see the long-term destruction of our country. It's a real thing, it's a serious thing, and it's going on every day.
Thank you. You nailed it.
Ann?
Thank you so much, Mr. Ambruzzo. You've been a fantastic member of this community and serving us in all kinds of capacities. I have a quick question. How does that benefit the money that you, the money that you, that we are now earning that we weren't earning before, how does that benefit the county? Can you tell me how that affects all of us?
Great question, Representative, and always Mayor. Since we have separation of powers, our job is to earn the money, then I turn it over to the County Commission primarily. to the County Commission primarily. What Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Baxter, I actually remember Commissioner Baxter saying, they lowered property taxes for the first time in many, many years last time. Part of the reason that was done was because of the investment income, but it's really the County Commission's overall discretion of what those funds are used for, whether it's building new parks, building new roads, lowering our debt. And by the way, we have one of the best-managed county governments in America. There's actually a way to get to zero debt, which if you look at other large counties and other large municipalities, cities, there's no way out. But here in Palm Beach County, all our County Commissions going back 30, 40, 50 years, up into today, have managed our funds so well that we have an incredible bond rating and a way out of debt. But to answer your question, it's the County Commission's discretion. I just earn the money and give it to them.
Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Today, we have one local bill to hear this morning. Each member in the staff have received the documents in advance for review. These proposed local bills will be presented, discussed, and then will be taken up for a vote. Following the full presentation from the local bill presenter, we will allow for public comment from these, those in the audience who wish to speak on to the bill being presented and offer remarks prior to the final vote on a local bill. Due to our full agenda, in order to allow everyone to speak, you will have up to two minutes to try public comments on the local bill. Please fill out a public comment form to speak on any of the local bills presented. According to our rules, local bills are passed with the majority of House members present and a majority of the vote of the Senate members present. Today's local bill is being put forward, Building Code Advisory Board of Palm Beach County. It will be introduced by Casey Denny, Director of Palm Beach County Legislative Affairs. And the bill's sponsor is our own Representative Kelly Skidmore. Casey?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, almost afternoon, members. My name is Casey Denny. I'm the Legislative Affairs Director for Palm Beach County. I also have with me here today Michael Goger from Palm Beach County's Planning, Zoning, and Building Department. We really appreciate your time this morning, afternoon, to talk to you about the Building Code Advisory Board of Palm Beach County and the local bill that we brought forth today. A little background, the Building Code Advisory Board was established in 1974 through a special act of the legislature, so any changes that we need to make have to go through the local bill process. This board exists to provide non-binding administrative and technical interpretations to evaluate new building products and offer technical support to Palm Beach County, its 39 municipalities, and the general public. These efforts promote consistent and proper application of the Florida Building Code throughout our county. This local bill proposes one small but essential amendment to the special act, which revises the definition of a building official, only as it applies to the Building Code Advisory Board. Currently, the special act defines a building official as a full-time paid employee of a local government. However, the industry landscape has shifted significantly since the board's inception, and now local governments are increasingly using part-time contracted staff and private providers to fulfill these roles. Under the current definition, these qualified individuals are ineligible to serve on the Building Code Advisory Board. This restriction has created challenges for county staff and the Board of County Commissioners in recent years. As members on this board term out and serve their term, vacancies on the board remain open for a very long time, which undermines the board's effectiveness and hinders its ability to provide these services to our residents and achieve a forum at meetings. The proposed bill addresses this by expanding the eligibility criteria for the board membership, and that is all it does. So if you all have any questions, we're happy to take them now, and any concerns, we're happy to address.
Members, are there any questions? Seeing none. Any public comment on this bill? Seeing none. Who would like to make the motion to approve this local bill? Senator Berman?
I'll second.
Second by, okay. Is there a member debate? Call the roll, please.
Senator Berman?
Yes.
Senator Bernard?
Yes.
Senator Harrell?
Yes.
Senator Polsky?
Representative Caruso?
Yes.
Representative Casello?
Yes.
Representative Edmonds?
Yes.
Representative Gerwig?
Yes.
Representative Gossett Seidman?
Yes.
Representative Skidmore?
Yes.
Representative Snyder?
Representative Tindred?
Yes.
Representative Weinberger?
Yes.
By your vote, this bill has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, members, and thank you for asking.
We'll now have the portion where we have a series of presenters. You will have three minutes to complete your presentation. If members have questions, they will ask them after your comments have been completed. Please begin your comments by stating your full name clearly for the record. First one up will be Dan Pellwitz. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dan Pellwitz. I'm the Executive Director of the Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County. The Solid Waste Authority is a dependent special district created by an act of the legislature back in 1975. We are responsible for providing a comprehensive, integrated solid waste management system, resource recovery system for Palm Beach County. I am very pleased to report that Palm Beach County for the last two years has the highest recycling rate in the state due to the efforts that we have made in the facilities and infrastructure that we have created. In 2023, we recycled 84% of the waste generated in Palm Beach County, and we successfully diverted more than 80% of the waste generated in the county from the landfill, which is very important for preserving that resource. 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of the Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County, and a big thank you to Senator Berman and her office, who has expressed interest in a Senate resolution acknowledging that, and we thank her for that. On other matters, we are asking for your support on two issues. The first issue is, the state is desperately in need of a new recycling goal. We've been pursuing this for the past couple of years. While Palm Beach County is able to achieve the 75% rate, nearly every other county is not. So it does need to be addressed. We thank you, Representative Casello, for sponsoring it last year, and hopefully we can get some movement on it this year and finally get that done. The big ask I have, though, is related to lithium-ion batteries and the desperate need to remove these from the waste stream. Lithium-ion batteries are a threat to our facilities and to solid waste workers throughout the state. These batteries that are found in toys and tools and greeting cards, when they get ruptured and they get wet, they're exposed to liquids, they catch on fire, they burn very hot, and they burn for a very long time. They're very, very difficult to put out. They have caused fires in our recycling facilities, they've caused fires in garbage trucks, and they've caused fires in waste energy plants as well. They've also caused fires in people's homes and garages. We are working and have partnered with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue to get the message out in Palm Beach County, but we are in desperate need of statewide legislation in order to get these products out of the waste stream and into the recycling stream. So again, I thank you, Senator Berman, for your interest in supporting and working with us on a bill that was developed with Kena Corey, and also potentially on a more comprehensive bill. And I'd also like to thank Representative Caruso for coming out this week, and I know that you have expressed an interest in this as well. So we'd like to get something done. With that, as with all matters, solid waste and recycling, we are always here to support you and to answer any questions you have. As the, as an authority, we are unique in the state, and legislation can't affect us differently than other counties that don't have the investment and infrastructure that we have. And with that, I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Caruso?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Executive Director Pellwitz for the great tour that we took on this week. It was very eye-opening. When I pulled into the facility, I thought the facility was shut down and wasn't working. There was nothing coming out of the smokestacks, and, but they were fully operational. And, you know, what you've done there in terms of filtering and everything for the environment is a model for the state of Florida. And the fact that you convert 90 to 95% of the trash that goes out there, the solid waste, into either energy or recycled is amazing. And so my hat's off to the great work you're doing out there. And I think a tour needs to be done with all the other solid waste authorities throughout the state to come see the model that we have here in Palm Beach County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator?
Yes, thank you, sir. Is it on?
It is.
Thank you very much for your information, and I want to add that we had a very serious garbage truck fire a few years ago in my district. And the effects are not just that the truck is damaged, the garbage has to be dumped and recollected. I'm not telling you anything, but for the audience to know, the pavement is melted, it caught fire to a school bus stop and vegetation and a park bench. It's a very, very serious and dramatic issue, so I would be fully behind something to make some corrections and educate the public. I don't think people realize in my district and perhaps throughout the county that it's so easy to have one bin in your house and go drop it off at the recyclables on Lynton Boulevard, for example, in Southeast County, and aerosol cans, paint, there's so many things that could be dropped off there. And whatever we can do to educate the public, I'm fully behind.
Anybody else?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Milton Segarra.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and delegation. Milton Segarra, President and CEO of Discover the Palm Beaches. Since the 80s, would be the destination marketing organization for the beautiful Palm Beaches. Our main role is to promote this beautiful place to the world. And to do that, we count with a phenomenal staff of 53 dedicated professionals, a multi-generational, diverse group of people, in which we, every single day, we push ourselves to represent what we are. We do that in conjunction with the TDC, Tourist Development Council from the county, and the other agencies, the Cultural Council, the Film and TV Commission, the Sports Commission, and in conjunction with the Commission Center, the ERM, the airport, and some other agencies as well. And we've been very successful. The fact of the matter is that the last year, we had more than 9.6 million visitors that came to visit us, impacting our economy with $10.3 billion and supporting 90,000 jobs in our county. And we're part of a bigger business, which is the state of Florida, which as recently as last year surpassed and became the number-one destination in the nation, with over 141 million visitors, $131 billion in economic impact, and more than 1.2 million people working in our industry. The reason why we're successful is because we do have a system in place, as Ms. Gannon mentioned in the beginning, which provides the income and the revenue for us to promote. And our ask in this particular moment, and I can tell you before I go into that, we do surveys with our residents, and 73% of our residents, three of every four residents, understand that the economic impact and the vitality that tourism brings to our county is really, really important. That that's really important to maintain from the center. So as you know, every single year in Tallahassee, there are some challenges about the specific model in which the VET Act uses are distributed and the uses for that. Our ask for you this morning is to make sure that in case those type of projects comes back to your consideration, you support and maintain the current status and the current distribution of the funding. We are very, very successful. We have seen tremendous growth into this. And the other part is to support that Visit Florida, the state agency in charge of tourism, also receive a fair portion of the budget, so they can maintain the very important component of supporting us. At the end of the day, successful tourism, like we are all doing, brings a phenomenal component of economic vitality to the county, and number two, quality of place and quality of life. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, I'll be very happy to answer those.
Is there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, presenter, will be Jennifer Sullivan.
Good morning. Happy New Year. I'm Jennifer Sullivan, Senior Vice President of the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County. We are the designated local arts agency for the county and provide support services to cultural organizations and professional artists in our communities. This is a very important year for our sector. We received quite a shock in June when the governor vetoed $32 million in arts and cultural grant funding for 640 organizations across the state. This had a $3.1 million impact on Palm Beach County. 50 organizations received no matching operating support from the state. Many of these are small businesses, including Ballet Palm Beach, the Symphonia in Boca Raton, Lake Worth Playhouse, Resource Depot, and the Spady Cultural Heritage Museum, to name a few. The veto had an immediate effect on communities across the state. Here in Palm Beach County, some organizations eliminated staff, canceled public events, and some cut programs. The highest percentage of cuts going to arts education program for children and seniors. Just as devastating as the funding reductions were to the organizations was the statement that the veto sent across the country, that arts and culture are not valued in the state of Florida. We know that's not the case. Legislators on both sides of the aisle supported the funding recommendation in last year's budget, and we are especially grateful to the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. You know the value of arts and culture and on our economy, on education, quality of life, and mental and physical wellness. We need your help to restore the funding, restore the grant funding next year, especially Senator Polsky as Vice Chair, and Senator Bernard as a member of the Subcommittee on Transportation, Tourism, and Economic Development, as they will be making the initial recommendations on funding levels in the Senate, and to Delegation Chair Casello and Vice Chair Snyder. We also hope you will help us reach out to your colleagues on the House side, including Representatives Schoeff and Stark, Chairs and Vice Chair of the Transportation and Economic Development Budget Subcommittee. Not only does the art sector generate $5.7 billion in economic impact and attract $63 million annual visitors to the state of Florida, 87% of Americans across the country agree that arts and culture is important to their community's quality of life and livability. Please help us send a message that Florida supports the arts. We look forward to working with you and your staff to restore the critical division of arts and cultural grant funding next year, and we will see you up in Tallahassee for Palm Beach County days.
Thank you. Any questions? Senator Berman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief comment. Thank you so much for the tour that we had of the cultural arts facility, some of the facilities here in Palm Beach County. And I'm sure you know that many of us were distraught about the governor's veto also, and we will go back and, and we, many of us on this delegation are strong supporters of the arts, and we will continue to do so and urge the governor to reinstate the funding. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Casello, and esteemed delegation. I'm Sharon LaRue, the President and CEO of 2-on-1 Palm Beach Treasure Ghost. I want to take just a moment to thank all of you for your unwavering support in addressing the growing need for mental health services in the community. And a special thank you to Senator Harrell, who has had ongoing advocacy over the years and sponsored the appropriations and shepherded that through. Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to share that with that $2 million in funding from the state of Florida, along with federal and private sources, we've successfully reached our funding goal of $12 million. And construction on our two-story, 12,000-square-foot hurricane-rated facility in Lantana will begin soon. So we're thrilled with that progress, and the facility will be a cornerstone in helping us meet the growing demand for services, and we're deeply grateful, again, for your contributions to make this happen. Looking ahead, as call volume continues to increase, especially with the requests for help following the launch of the 988 hotline, there may be... for help following the launch of the nine-eight-eight hotline, there may be a need for more operational funding. However, for now, we're thrilled to celebrate this achievement. And just by way of background, for anyone who doesn't know, especially in the audience, Two on One is the only free twenty-four-seven crisis hotline serving Palm Beach, Martin, St. Louis, Okeechobee, and Indian River. And we provide suicide prevention, crisis intervention, and connection to community resources. Over the last fifteen years, many of you are already aware that the suicide rate has continued to increase at an alarming level. And that was part of what prompted nationally the number to change the suicide prevention number from a long eight-hundred number to the shorter, easier-to-remember nine-eight-eight. And of course, we are answering those calls for help each and every day. Our highly-trained staff handle over a hundred thousand requests for help annually, and we respond to about ten life-saving calls each and every day. So again, on behalf of the entire Two on One Palm Beach and Treasure Coast team, thank you so much for your continued support of our mission to save lives through crisis intervention by connecting people to help twenty-four-seven. Thank you.
Any questions? Representative Skidmore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Nice to see you.
Good morning.
Real quick question. Um, I think we talked about at one point, the, um, I'm not going to say this right, but the geo fencing.
The geo routing.
Geo routing.
Yeah.
Is that moving forward? Uh, can you give us a quick update on that?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
What, um, she is referring to is that when nine-eight-eight, oh, let me back up. Two on One has, um, something for cell phones called geo routing, which means that if you call Two on One anywhere in the country, that cell phone call will be triaged and you'll be routed to the local center near you. When nine-eight-eight launched, it did not launch with that capacity, and calls were only routed to the area code. We know that that's problematic. So there's been a national effort to shift that, and they have started with the biggest providers. My understanding was that about three months ago, they, they, um, three major providers all shifted to geo routing. The latest update I got was that it may not all be a hundred percent happening, but it is being incrementally rolled out. And fabulous question. We're all monitoring that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next presenter will be Courtney Valli.
My name is Courtney Valli, and I'm honored to speak to you today as the founder of our Happy Place in Town. Growing up in Palm Beach County, the daughter of an elementary school teacher that focused on her work in our inner-city schools, I turned into a startup engineer and a global entrepreneur, next thing I knew. However, I found myself back to my child development roots, and I have now founded our Happy Place in Town. Imagine a place where your family, every generation, everything from infants to grandparents, has a place built for happiness, convenience, and community. A place where creativity flourishes, connections thrive, and kindness leads the way. A place that feels like an extension of your family, a home away from home, and a place where everybody knows your name. Rhythm and Hughes is not just a place. It's an experience every time you go, wherever we go. It's built with kindness, community, happiness, and wholeness at the forefront of everything that we do. From coffee to confetti, we've created a space that serves the whole family, birth to a hundred. We're on, we're on the go, and incredible family programming are not just our hats that we wear. We're a trusted resource. We find something for you if you can't. That's the magic. That's the Sandbox, the Happiness Brand, and Rhythm and Hughes. Life's pivot, pivots blessed me to this next level, and now it, with our second location, we've done another revitalization of a nineteen-sixty-nine treasure in our town. We've built something special, and it's also known as the Happy Place in Town. I didn't name it that. We live in a world that's moved away from what makes us human, our ability to explore, create, and interact with one another. And families need this. They need a place where they can reconnect, find joy, support, and a sense of belonging. This is where the Sandbox come in, comes in. It's not just going to be a local center. It's going to be a model for community transformation all over the world. It's a place where mental wellness, early child development, and family support thrive under one roof. Why us? I know we're qualified. I can show you. I know we're ready. I can show you. And I know we're needed. I can show you. We've proven our impact with nearly two million diapers donated through our community-driven diaper bank that started in our walls, events like Rainbow Palooza that unite thousands in celebration of kindness, community, and joy, and partnerships with both private and sector, private and public sectors, serving as a trusted engagement partner since 2015. Now more than ever, we need strong partnerships to bring this vision to life and amplify the importance of a thriving family for our society, not just for Palm Beach County, but for our world. We can be the sunshine state and lead as an example. This is our time. This isn't about corporate America or private funding that I can have. This is about public funds that truly serve the public. By becoming a leading sponsor of the Sandbox, you're investing in the legacy that will serve everyone. Imagine a world where happiness and support aren't just luxuries, but they're cornerstones of every community. Thank you.
Any questions, members? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
The next presenter will be Kaylee Turpak.
My name is Lee Turpak, and I've been a resident of Palm Beach County and an early childhood professional for over forty years. I currently live in Western Lake Worth and work in Delray Beach. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your dedication to serving the people of Florida, especially the children and families here. As you know, children cannot vote. That's why I'm here, to ask you to keep Florida's children, especially our youngest learners, at the forefront of your decisions as you draft and adjust laws and budgets this session. Florida has made remarkable strides over the past thirty-five years. A career pathway for early educators has been built for career advancement and professional development for early childhood educators. In Palm Beach County, the Children's Services Council funds degrees in early childhood education and youth development, setting a strong example for the state. The School Readiness Plus legislation that you all passed last session expanded public funding, helping families who make less than the state's median income maintain childcare scholarships when income increases are offered at work. Florida established and enforces developmental accountability standards to prioritize young children's learning outcomes through licensing, school readiness, and VPK programs. The five-hundred-and-forty-hour VPK program offers universal access to early education for every four-year-old in Florida. Despite these achievements, critical gaps remain. Please help us address the workforce crisis. The childcare challenges facing Palm Beach County and beyond stem from underinvestment, not overregulation. We need your help to invest in better compensation and benefits for early educators. These professionals shape the foundation of our future, yet they lack access to health benefits, they let alone a living wage, and to continue to work in this profession. And every day, more and more people are leaving the profession for a higher-wage job that doesn't require as much work. As a result, many early childhood educators are eligible to receive public funds. Please support an increase in public investment to support childcare for young children and out-of-time, school-time care for school-aged children. Learning doesn't begin in kindergarten or pre-K. It begins in utero. The first three years, the brain research shows us that the first three years is consequential for lifelong well-being. Continued investments in out-of-school-time programs while parents work is crucial, not only to encourage students to reach their greatest potential, but also to ensure children are not left home alone to get into other kinds of mischief that we've gotten beyond. Finally, due to the financial and logistical challenges of South Florida families and advocates face when traveling to Tallahassee to share their views in person, your awareness of our concerns and willingness to act on the behalf of children make all the difference. Thank you for your service, for your time, and for caring for the children and families as you go through this legislative session.
Is any questions, members? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presenter will be Joy Finer. Joy?
I don't have her. Did you skip someone?
Joy who? Joy who?
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Joy Finer, and I'm a volunteer for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, or ACS CAN, the nonpartisan, nonprofit advocacy affiliate of the American Cancer Society. We work on behalf of the nearly one-hundred-and-sixty-one Floridians who will be diagnosed with cancer this year to promote policies that will reduce the cancer burden and ultimately save lives. I'm here today to talk to you about a few of our important priorities going into the 2025 legislation session. Before that, I just would like to let you know that in nineteen-eighty-one, I was diagnosed with early-stage breast cancer. At the time, I was a young, white, middle-class female, employed, and had great health insurance. That's why I'm standing here before you. Excuse me. Forty-three years later, cancer-free. But not everybody... But not everybody in Florida is affording that health insurance. So I am coming here to talk to you about funding the Mary Brogan Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program. First of all, I'm grateful that the legislature allocated more money last session for the Mary Brogan program. More than twenty-three thousand Floridian women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2025. The Mary Brogan program covers breast and cervical cancer screenings for medically underserved and underinsured women in these communities. This means more are up to date on screenings and more cancers will be diagnosed and cures will come. We know that treatment is much more likely to be successful when cancer is caught early. Historically, this program has reached less than ten percent of the eligible population. However, we expect this reach to expand with the state's investment of three million dollars this year, up from the one-point-eight-three million in past years. We encourage you to continue funding this critical program at three million dollars in next year's budget so that we can continue to serve more eligible Floridians and save more lives. Also, it's not just breast cancer and cervical cancer. It's all cancers. Closing the coverage gap, Medicaid expansion. We know that having health insurance is a top indicator of whether someone survives cancer. Reliable, affordable health insurance means a patient has access to preventive care, screening, has access to comprehensive, affordable care, has access to follow-up scans, and service treatment.
Thank you.
Next session, we encourage you to continue your funding, and I thank you for your past funding.
Any questions, members? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Next presenter, Jennifer Dana.
My name is Jennifer Dana. I brought with me, um, some of my fellow nine-one-one public safety telecommunications. We're all from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. We're actually here today because we're, we're here to implore you to help us get reclassified as first responders. Currently, the state of Florida's definition of first responder includes the traditional occupations, so your police officer, your firefighter, your paramedic. But the way that they're classified actually gives them mental health and retirement benefits. Nine-one-one public safety telecommunications have their own definition, and we don't receive any of these benefits. For those of you who may not know, Florida actually has a statute that specifically, uh, designates first responder peer support. And they actually include nine-one-one public safety telecommunications in that definition because it says that first responders are supporting first responders because they know what it's like to be a first responder. The state of Florida essentially is acknowledging, we know what it feels like to be a first responder, yet we're still excluded from any of the benefits that the traditional first responders are given. Florida as a whole is already struggling to keep people working in their nine-one-one centers. Excluding us from many first responder benefits only exacerbates the turnover and burnout. Twenty-five other states across the nation have already reclassified their nine-one-one telecommunications as first responders. Four of them right now have legislation in the works. And most of those who've already been reclassified as first responders, they've included mental health and retirement benefits with that. We've heard pushback in years past that this is too expensive, can't afford it. Last year, the governor's office actually did an actuarial study that says it's feasible to include mental health benefits and retirement benefits and reclassify us as first responders. Representative Casello, you're a former firefighter. You know what it means to be a first responder. You've seen colleagues diagnosed with PTSD. You know how important it is for your fellow public safety members to get the mental health and resources that they need. We endure similar traumatic exposure daily. You know, the one thing people don't always realize is that when someone calls nine-one-one, the very first person they're talking to is not a firefighter, it's not a paramedic, it's not a police officer, it's us. And in November, you guys already saw our colleagues up here recognizing the three that we lost. We fielded those calls. We answered the calls when witnesses saw our deputies get hit. We were the ones that coordinated with fire rescue and coordinated with road patrol. But we're still excluded from all of the trauma that comes with being a first responder. We're making life and death decisions every single day, yet as I said, we're excluded from the very benefits designed to support the mental health for those who are in public safety. Reclassifying us as first responders will provide the mental health benefits, including those for PTSD, which would in turn improve retention recruitment. Thank you for your time and consideration today. Our ask is, we need help getting sponsored. We need to get on a bill. We need to be finally reclassified as first responders. Thank you.
Members, any questions? Representative Skidmore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation today. Um, quick question. You answered my first question, is do you have a bill sponsor? Has this legislation been filed in the past, um, in Florida? And what is the track record that you've had so far?
In the past, as far as I understand, it doesn't get past any, I don't even think it goes onto anybody's agendas when it goes up to the different, um, groups. But we have had bills that we've been attached to. I don't think, I've, I've got a list of it. I can actually email you guys if you want. I've got all the past ones. I don't know that we've ever had one that was dedicated to just us. We've always been kind of just a tail along with everybody else's. Um, we've had some interest in some people sponsoring us. Um, we'd like to see both sides of the political aisle, um, get jumped on there, but that's what's holding us up. And in the past, like I said, we've had pushback because of cost. But now we actually got the actuarial study from the governor last year, and it's showing that it's feasible for us to get reclassified. Follow up?
Like you said earlier, being a first responder, your voices, they're, they're first voices we hear as we roll out of stations. The information you pass on to us saves lives. And you go through the same thing mentally. You hear the calls going back and forth, what we deal with. We shot that round a couple sessions in a row. Uh, like you said, we didn't get much traction, but I will sponsor a bill this year. I will tell you this. I will sponsor the bill this year, and, uh, I think we'll get its support, especially with the governor's, uh...
Actuarial study?
Yeah. And, uh, so hopefully we can get some traction on it. So this year could be the year.
I appreciate it.
A big, big supporter of it.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
President, Senator Skidmore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, there you go. You got a sponsor.
I did.
Happy to co-sponsor, happy to, um, request that all members of Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation co-sponsor legislation in the House, um, and that you get a Senate sponsor. Happy to do whatever that we can, but also recommend that your association, um, I'm assuming you have a statewide association.
We've got some.
That your other, um, organizations, other counties... Even if it were just as an amendment, which is also a possibility, as Senator Harrell talked about earlier today, whatever we can do to be helpful, I think that it is past time. So thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Before you leave the building, see my legislative aide over there, Kristy, and give your permission, okay?
Absolutely.
Be in contact.
Yes, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to be the Senate sponsor, so if you need a job.
That'd be amazing.
I'm really excited. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Next presenter will be Mindy Hankin.
Thank you.
Did I say that right?
Thank you.
Close enough.
Thank you.
Nice.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the delegation. I'm Mindy Hankin. I am the new executive director at the PACE Center for Girls. I may be new to the PACE Center for Girls, but I'm not new to Palm Beach County. I have proudly served in nonprofits, most recently at the Jewish Federation of Palm Beach County for the last 22 years. I live in Jupiter, and the PACE Center for Girls is located in Palm Springs. Just yesterday, the PACE Center for Girls celebrated 40 years in the state of Florida. It started in Jacksonville in 1985. It came to Palm Beach County in 1996. So soon, PACE Palm Beach will celebrate 30 years. There are over 20 locations throughout the state of Florida, and we are the only alternative education program exclusively for girls. You probably know that there are 13 alternative education programs in Palm Beach County. All the others are either co-ed or exclusively for boys. We have two signature programs. One is our Day Program, which provides academic and counseling services for middle school and high school girls. These are girls that are at risk of dropping out of public school. Typically, girls come to us two years behind academically, and we work with them year-round to get them caught up and get them back into their home school. We are gender-specific. We're only for girls. We're trauma-informed. We understand that when girls are not doing well, when anyone's not doing well in school, academically, there's other things going on underneath the surface, and so we deal with that trauma that they may be facing. And we are strength-based. We don't look at any of our girls and say, what's wrong with you? We work with them and discover their strengths and build upon that. We are non-residential, free, and voluntary. We have an incredible staff, and I invite you to come and see our school. It's a beautiful program. I'd love to give you a tour and show you all about our facility and our program. Our other program, our second signature program, is called REACH, which is a team of therapists that go out into the community and offer therapeutic services to adolescent girls throughout Palm Beach County. I gave all of you a folder that has information about the PACE Center for Girls, some of our impact. We did a very comprehensive study in 2019 that shows our impact, so you see that in there. And we're really excited, on April 2nd, mark your calendars, we will be in Tallahassee for PACE Day at the Capitol. Representatives from all the PACE centers throughout the state of Florida will be in Tallahassee, and we will be there with PACE Palm Beach girls to meet with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, members? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presenter, Ruth Magheria. Good afternoon.
My name is Ruth Magheria, and I'm the executive director of Cross Ministries. And I'm here just to give you a brief about what's going on at Cross and what we are seeing in our community. Cross Ministries has been around for 47 years, and our mission is to provide food for the hungry and food insecure in our community. We are boots on the ground, ensuring that people have food to eat. According to Feeding America, over 173,000 Palm Beach County residents are food insecure. Our food pantries are in 10 different locations, all the way from Delray Beach to Riviera Beach, Jupiter, Lake Worth, and Belle Glide, Wellington, Haverhill, Green Acres, and West Palm Beach. We also operate a food pantry in Indian Town in Martin County. Cross has experienced a 71% increase in the number of clients served over the last four years. More people are seeking food assistance today than they did during COVID. In 2024, just last year, we provided assistance to 121,664 individuals. 9,000 of those had never sought food assistance from Cross before. This past year, we have seen an increasing number of people relying on food assistance due to living costs going up. Some, especially us seniors, have also turned to our pantries as rising HOA and condo fees, property insurance, food costs, and other fixed expenses outpace their limited incomes. Many families face food insecurity due to stagnant wages, the scarcity of affordable housing, and the increasing medical costs and compounding challenges that are only expected to grow in 2025. Our caring kitchen program provides food and meals, hot lunches, as well as food to those who are homebound in Delray Beach. And our gleaning program ensures that we have fresh fruits and vegetables in our community through our local food banks. We go out into the fields and we harvest fresh produce that would otherwise go to waste. This past gleaning season, we were able to harvest 463,000 individual -- 463,000 pounds of fresh produce with about 3,500 volunteers. And I want to encourage each one of you to come out gleaning with us. We are right in the middle of gleaning season. I want to encourage each one of you to come out. You can be as young, you can bring your children, grandchildren, as young as five years. And one time, I was in the field, and we had a 92-year-old lady gleaning fresh fruits and vegetables. Again, I thank you for all that you do for our community. Because of you and the work that we do together, we can make Palm Beach County a much better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Members, any questions? Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ruth, for everything that you do. You mentioned that you've had a 71% increase in the last four years, I think you said, since COVID. And then you mentioned that you were seeing an uptick in the elderly. Would you say that -- do you have any percentages of whether that 71% is all across the board or it's a bigger increase in the elderly?
So the 71% is all across the board when we compare where we were in 2020 during COVID and where we are today. So that's across the board. But especially, you know, we have a food pantry, especially in Wellington, we are seeing a lot more seniors coming in, looking, you know, seeking food assistance, people who had never come to us. And when they come, they actually say it's because of all the fees that are going up that they hadn't planned for.
Thank you so much for that information, and thank you for everything that you and Cross Ministries do.
Thank you.
Representative Gurway.
I just want to tag on. I believe you have a relationship with the Village of Wellington?
Yes, we do.
So you're a provider with them?
Yes.
For this at their own facility?
Yes.
So I want to thank you for that. You've been a great partner.
Thank you. Thank you very much, yes. Our mobile food pantry is at the Village of Wellington every Friday morning, and we are seeing close to sometimes 80 to 90 households every single Friday morning.
Thank you, Executive Director Maghera.
Thank you.
And for all the work that Cross Ministries does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Dennis Miles, Executive Director of Children's Home Society of Florida. You were recognized. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Dennis Miles. I'm the new, and when I say new, I mean brand-new, executive director for Children's Home Society in Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade County. I come to CHS after a 20-year career with the Department of Children and Families. I recently retired and was introduced to some concepts that CHS is putting out there now as their new strategic plan, and I couldn't be more excited about it. I wanted to bring with us today, as I'm so new, I'm not sure I could speak to it in depth, but I have Dr. Muriel Panthol, who is one of our directors for the Community Partnership Schools. And this is the concept, more than anything, that brought me back to child welfare. I'm just so excited about this. So, Dr. Panthol.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As Dennis said, I am the senior director of Community Partnership -- partnership, where I would like to come out, school. I oversee the Community Partnership Schools in Palm Beach and Miami region. Along with me, I have a few of our directors. First is Javara Ziyans. He's the director at John F. Kennedy Middle School. He oversees the operations there. And then we have Rebecca, the director at Lake Worth High School. Now, the Community Partnership School model pulls together four core partners, our Palm Beach School District, Children's Home Society, our healthcare district of Palm Beach, and our local university, FAU. We received funding in 2023 to establish Community Partnership School in Palm Beach, and we are currently in our implementation year two. Now, with that, we are currently, these partners that come together to make the long-term commitment and investment to the students. The commitment starts with a 25-year commitment, MOU, and then we provide support throughout those years. We know for many of our students, school needs to become more than just a place to learn, but a hub that serves as a resource for students, their parents, and the community. We provide opportunities for expanded learning, family and community engagement, and wellness support, which addresses access to healthcare, increasing the mental health services that we now provide ongoingly to all of our schools. We are part of, we are proud of the impact that we've provided across the state. We have currently 50 schools, where 31 of those are Community Partnership Schools for Children's Home Society. We are requesting the legislature to increase funding at the 2025 session to continue implement the model across the state, specifically in Palm Beach. We thank you for your time and all the support you've provided in the past, and we will see you in CPS Capital Day in Tallahassee in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for stepping out of retirement and back into service.
I had some friends tell me, this is the second time I came out of retirement. They said, I don't think retirement means what you think it means.
Okay, moving on. CEO and President Larry Rain, Childnet. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. --
You look sharp.
Thank you very much. I've been thinking about retirement. Every time I think of doing it, Dennis comes back. So I'm here as the CEO of the Lead Agency for Community-Based Care in Palm Beach County, Childnet. Every year, I come and give you an update on the status of foster care in Palm Beach County and the state of Florida. Today's report is mixed. The good news in Palm Beach County is the number of children in foster care is the lowest it has been in the 12 years that Childnet has been here. On Friday, we went below 1,000 children in care, a number we probably thought we could never get to. Performance in Palm Beach County has also been excellent. On the 13 measures that the Department of Children and Families reviews our performance in Palm Beach County, it's not just Childnet, it's the judiciary, it's the attorneys, it's the behavioral healthcare system, Children's Services Council, County Human Services. But in Palm Beach, we exceed the state's target on 12 of the 13 measures, and we exceed the state average on 11 of those measures. So we are doing well. The not-so-good news is on the fiscal side. For the third consecutive year, Childnet is projecting a deficit, an operating deficit of $1.5 million. This is almost entirely a function of the increased costs of residential group care throughout the state of Florida. This is not unique to Childnet. It is not unique to Palm Beach. Currently, seven community-based care lead agencies out of 15 have applications to the risk pool to resolve some of their deficit. Those total applications are over $20 million. Childnet's is for $4.5 million. Regrettably, the risk pool only contains $3 million. The good side of this potentially is that this session may offer a unique opportunity for the legislature to implement a different form or method of allocating funding to the, from the Department of Children and Families to the lead agencies. There is a model. It has great promise. The department delivered it to the governor and the Senate President and the House Speaker over this past weekend. It is not perfect, but it's the first time that we have an opportunity to fund child welfare appropriately in the state of Florida. I look very forward to working with you, particularly, we are blessed to have two of your members on Senate Appropriations Committees that seem appropriate to this. Anything you need to know, we will be happy to share as we work to implement something that will be better for all of our children in the state of Florida. Thank you.
Questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. And I'll turn it back over to Chair. Thank you. Representative Crusoe. Next speaker will be Lisa Polisi? LaCroix. Excuse my names.
That's okay. Good afternoon, Palm Beach County delegation. My name is Lisa Paglis-Lacroix. I am the founder of Love Serving Autism. So it's an honor to be here today, and Happy New Year. This is an organization that teaches therapeutic racket sports intervention to children and adults with autism and developmental disabilities. In the United States, 1 in 6 children is diagnosed with developmental delay, and 1 in 36 children are diagnosed with autism by the age of eight. These numbers reflect a growing need for specialized evidence-based support that empowers children to thrive. Our organization is at the forefront of addressing this need. In the 2025-2026 Autism Therapeutic Wellness Program, we aim to expand our reach to serve more children and families in Palm Beach County and beyond. Our program integrates therapeutic racket sports, fitness activities, and social emotional learning to promote health, physical health, motor coordination, and communication and social interaction. Our programs also provide vital support to families. Autism often impacts the entire family unit. So we offer inclusive family fitness days and caregiver resources, and we create opportunities for families to bond and grow together. We are proud to share that our programs are supported by certified speech, occupational, physical, and behavioral therapists, and adaptive sports professionals, ensuring that every child receives the tailored support they need to succeed. But we cannot do this alone. To sustain and expand these life-changing programs, we do ask for your support and funding our 2025-2026 Autism Therapeutic Wellness Program. This is to ensure we can expand program locations to underserved youth, ensuring all families in Palm Beach County have access to services. We want to train more professionals and volunteers to meet the growing demand for our programs, and we want to provide scholarships for families facing financial barriers so that no child is left behind. The children we serve are the future of our community, and investing in these, in their wellness and development today creates a better, more inclusive, and vibrant Palm Beach County for tomorrow. Thank you, Senator Harrell, Representative Crusoe, and Representative Gossett-Siedman for championing this important cause, and to the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation for considering this vital investment in the children and families we serve. Thank you.
Any questions, members? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Next presenter, Christine Sylvain. Did I say that right?
Good morning, esteemed legislation. My name is Christine Sylvain. I am the CEO and founder of Path to College. We are a local nonprofit, and we help low-income students increase their competitiveness and prepare for college and career. We do this through a holistic development program that provides tutoring, one-on-one mentoring, career guidance, college tours, internship matching, and boutique-style college advising. advising. I am here to share thanks. We have, through our work, been helping about 1,000 students each year prepare for college, and with our flagship program, about 100 students each year getting over three hours a week of dedicated college and career planning and mentoring services. And because of that support, our students in that program, 100% of them go to four-year schools, with 60% going debt-free. For students in low-income communities, that is life-changing and lineage-changing. With that impact, we have been honored and grateful to have the support of the city of Lake Worth Beach, which has provided us with a 5,000-square-foot building to open what we are now calling the Catapult Center. And the Catapult Center will do just that, it will help students catapult into future careers and successful lives. I'm here to share gratitude. Last year, we applied for appropriations sponsored by Representative Caruso and former Senators Powell, and we were successful in that request, and I just want to share gratitude for your time and for supporting our work. We plan to open up the Catapult Center later this year, and it has been a robust community effort with many local businesses supporting the architectural and the construction work, including Hedrick Brothers Construction, and Spina O'Rourke, and ECF Engineers. So, we are excited, and I want to tell you a little bit more about it. At the Catapult Center, we plan to expand our services outside of our flagship program, outside of our community workshops, where we're serving 1,000 students a year, and we plan to serve 3,000 to 5,000 students a year. Well, we will provide individualized support and college coaching, so any student can come in, make an appointment with a college coach, do a career aptitude test, and be given an individualized plan for college and career that matches Palm Beach County's driving industries, so where our labor gaps are and where we need to invest in workforce development. So, again, thank you, thank you again to the state of Florida and to all of you for your shared commitment to local workforce development. I invite you all to tour, those who have not had the opportunity to, and look forward to a great year, and I will absolutely see you at Palm Beach County Days in March. Thank you again.
Any questions, members? Representative Caruso?
Thank you, Chair. Christine, I just want to say, thanks for the great work that your organization does. It's an honor to help with the appropriation, and, you know, going over there and meeting the students you work with, you are, you are not just, you're changing lives, you're changing the direction of families, and creating legacies, and to that, we thank you very much.
It's so meaningful to have your support. Thank you for the way that you have shown up and for your continued advocacy for our local students. It means a lot. Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you so much. Next presenter, Daphne Utter.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daphne Utter. I am the CEO and founder of One Life to Live Foundation. We are a veteran-based organization. Our mission is to support, inspire, and educate women veterans, spouses, and caregivers of wounded veterans by offering a day of respite and retreat dedicated to their personal wellness and wellbeing. I just want to say that Florida is one of, is the third largest veteran population in the United States, and out of the third largest, we have 8.4% of the women veterans leaving in South Florida. We are one of the fastest-growing population in Florida. Mission stands with women veterans and caregivers. We know that caregivers, in general, tend to neglect their health and their wellbeing to support the loved ones that they are caring for, and our organization would like to give them a day where they can focus on themselves and put their health first. So, we would like the support of the delegates today to make sure that caregivers and women veterans are honored and taken care of when it comes to being at the forefront of caring for their loved ones or caring for disabled veterans. Thank you.
Any questions, members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presenter, Christina Casanova. I skipped one, I was told?
No.
She was wrong, I was right. McCarthy, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Christina Casanova-McCarthy. I am the Executive Director for the National Association of Social Workers, and I am here today with the Palm Beach Unit Leadership, Andres Torres and Patricia Goodrich. Together, our association represents over 4,000 social workers statewide and 456 social workers here in Palm Beach County. Today, we are here to discuss House Bill 27, the Social Work Interstate Licensing Compact, sponsored by Representative Homchowsky, who is excited to work with all of you, and she gives you her well wishes, because I saw her yesterday. And of course, this companion bill that has been filed and sponsored by the esteemed Senator Harrell. Senator Harrell, we want to publicly thank you for your support. Expanding mental health services is a known priority, particularly in our rural areas in our state, but we also know that expanding any type of mental health services is needed. We are here to serve, and we are here to do that work, but we need your help, and Andres will explain why.
Thank you, Christina. As she already said, I'm the Chair of the Palm Beach Unit of the National Association of Social Workers. I'm standing here also with Patricia Goodrich, who is our Legislative Chair for the Palm Beach Unit. We would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about House Bill 27, the Social Work Interstate Compact. This compact, which has already been passed in several states, would afford many benefits to your constituents. For one, it would afford the opportunity to hire seasoned and licensed clinicians from other states who are considering relocating to Palm Beach County and the state of Florida. Currently, without this compact in place, clinicians from other states would have to go through the laborious licensing process here in the state of Florida, because we do not currently have reciprocity with any other states. Another benefit involved, providing vital mental health supportive services to individuals and families across state lines. Currently, I am the Grief Care Manager for Trust Bridge Hospice of Palm Beach County. Many of the individuals that we see for supportive counseling may not reside in this county, but they are here in Palm Beach County because their family member may have just passed while in hospice. Although we provide services to these family members while they are here in our county, once they leave, we can no longer provide supportive counseling to them and must refer them out. This compact would allow us to continue providing this vital resources to these family members while links are made to other providers for them once they return home. Once again, we would like to thank you for supporting House Bill 27 and passing the Social Work Interstate Compact. We would also like to take this opportunity to wish you a great and productive legislative session.
Thank you. Any questions? Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank you all for your hard work in this endeavor. It's been an ongoing process, and I hope that this year, we do get it passed, and that we really have more social workers come to the state of Florida. People don't realize, with the tremendous growth in the state, you know, over 700 people a day moving to Florida, they don't bring their counselors, their social workers, their LCSWs with them, and this will, and it becomes, it's a difficult process to get licensed in the state of Florida. So, this will allow us, hopefully, to have more people come to Florida with those skills and talents that we really, really need to address the mental health crisis we're having in the state of Florida. And we thank you for bringing this to us, and we're going to continue to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next presenter, David Cranston.
Got to bring this up a little bit for myself. Good morning, all. My name is David Cranston. I am the Florida Energy Policy Manager with the Environmental Defense Fund. For those of you who are unfamiliar with EDF, we are a global nonprofit that is focused on science-based and economically sound solutions to environmental challenges. In Florida, we have more than 285,000 members and supporters who motivate our efforts on coastal resilience, transportation, insurance, and energy toward a cleaner, safer, and more affordable sunshine state. First, our thanks to those of you who voted in support of the flood disclosure bill last session. Multiple hurricanes made 2024 a particularly difficult year for many residents. We look forward to continuing work on flooding solutions, including renewing the Resilient Florida Trust Fund and increasing its funding to address needs for stormwater and extreme weather flood prevention. Florida is about 75% reliant on imported natural gas for our electricity. The good news is that utility-scale solar is now about 15% cheaper than building new natural gas plants, and does not put Florida families and businesses' electric bills at the mercy of global market fluctuations. EDF is working to strengthen Florida's energy security through diversified local energy sources, improved energy efficiency, and comprehensive electric grid planning, and we look, we look for your support to advance these efforts. Florida also has the second-highest number of registered EVs in the country, now close to 400,000. We appreciate the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services' new rule to ensure safe and efficient deployment of public EV charging infrastructure statewide. Likewise, we are pleased to see the state leveraging its $200 million in federal NEVI funding to add EV charging station projects, and we ask for your continued support to ensure that we provide this infrastructure that's needed to address the future of transportation. Florida will benefit significantly from investing its NEVI funds to strengthen our transportation network and improve emergency evacuation routes. This has been a tough year for Floridians, and we expect that affordability and resilience against natural disasters will be top of mind for the legislature in 2025. There is overwhelming bipartisan support in Florida for implementing new solutions that protect our future. EDF stands ready to assist you in evaluating these challenges and crafting policy solutions that create cost savings for residents, more resilient and adaptable infrastructure, and a more robust economy. So, I thank you for your attention and your service to this great state of ours.
Any questions? Thank you, David. The next presenter, Marilyn Ricci. Did I say that right? I hope.
I'm a little shorter. Good afternoon. Thank you for your service. My name is Marilyn Ricci. As a member of the Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, I'm here to talk about the national 988 telephone number. It is critical that funding is continued and increased to support this life-saving and cost-saving number. 988 has been an important step in helping people living with mental illness and their families navigate the mental health system. As a parent of a person living with a mental illness, I have a lot of experience with the mental health system. There are no other illnesses that can isolate a family quite like mental illness. Finding that your wonderful, high-achieving young adult has a mental illness is terrifying and filled with grief. Our mental health system often compounds the terror and grief by not having an easy way for families to get compassionate, competent help. People with a mental illness and their families are usually not treated in the same manner by healthcare or society as those with other illnesses. Often, instead of help, you end up alone with no treatment plan, or possibly jail, or an unnecessary hospitalization. There are no other illnesses that have those dire consequences. 988 is groundbreaking, because now there is a number that those struggling with mental illness can call and receive compassionate care and actual help for their issues. To me, it is amazing. What should happen when you dial 988? You should get an immediate response. You're in a crisis. A knowledgeable, compassionate person will take your call. You will get help finding resources to handle your crisis. It means that there are mobile crisis teams and centralized receiving facilities available. You will be able to stay on the phone with the person as long as you need. 988 means you are not alone trying to figure out a complex mental health system. But we have to make sure that the systems are in place, so that the promise of 988 is filled. As of May 2024, our 988 answer statewide rate was 78%. The national average was 88. Our goal is 90%. An estimated 164 more crisis counselors in the state are needed to reach 90%. And as we heard about GRO routing, the call volume is expected to increase, also with increased advertisement. Please support the Department of Children and Family Services to increase 988 funding. When Floridians call for help because of thoughts of suicide or behavioral health crisis, it's vital that they can get immediate help. Recovery is possible for those living with mental illness. The concern of the Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition is the long-term sustainability of this vital program. Thank you.
Members, any questions? Thank you so much. Next presenter will be Catherine Bez-Banzon? Bez-Banzon? Go on once, twice. Okay. Next follow-up with Robin Samberg.
I'm Robin Samberg. I'm the Vice President of Advocacy for National Council of Jewish Women in Palm Beach, and I want to thank the delegation for this opportunity, as well as Kaiser University. Our organization is probably best known for the kids closeted throughout Palm Beach, serving clothing to children in Title I schools. We are an organization that's dedicated to improving the lives of women and children, and accordingly, we stand for a woman's right to choose in a society where the government does not interfere with private medical decision. Today, we're here solely to address the issue of ensuring a pregnant woman's right to timely emergency medical care when experiencing natural complications of pregnancy. Under our present statute, Florida has an urgent issue that affects women, families, and the very essence of compassionate health care. Pregnancy is one of the most vulnerable times in a woman's life, yet the current legal barrier, which exists in Section 1A, causes the delay of critical emergency medical care when a complication arises. Imagine an individual entering a doctor's office or an emergency room with the onset of a heart attack or stroke and being denied the necessary emergency care to stop that event. No one here would tolerate that. We are making the analogy today and assert that the inhumane delay in care for women suffering miscarriage that was caused by our statute can help, can help, can happen, rather, to anyone, our wives and daughters. When a pregnant woman is suffering the complication of pregnancy, we ask you to remember that that woman is sick and she is in an emergency. We're asking this distinguished delegation to recognize that a pregnant woman must not have less rights than any other sick human being. We cannot let that be the intention of Florida. We must fix this terrible error. We thank Senator Berman for her interest in working with this to see what we can do to change a statute that clearly needs to be amended. We must be able to provide the immediate performance of standard emergency obstetric care to a woman presenting with natural complication of pregnancy. There are three areas. One, the 24-hour waiting period must be eliminated as it may cause life-threatening conditions. Two, the need for corroborating opinion by a second physician is useless. Laboratory diagnostic and surgical reports will corroborate any emergency issues. Laboratory diagnostic and surgical reports will corroborate any emergency issue. Three, a physician must not feel the chill of the threat of criminal or civil penalty when acting in good faith to preserve a patient's health or life. Ladies and gentlemen, this proposed fix is not about politics. It's about guaranteeing women the same standard of care as any patient in a medical emergency. We thank you again, and we pray for your anticipated support. We hope to see you in district and in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
The next presenter, Kelly DeVito.
My name is Kelly DeVito, and I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We are a grassroots organization whose mission is to reduce gun violence of all types. We have chapters in 50 states across the country and have 10 million supporters and volunteers. On behalf of our Palm Beach County volunteers, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Gun violence is a public health crisis. Over 3,000 Floridians are killed by guns each year. It is the leading cause of death for children and teens. Three years ago, I stood before you advocating and imploring our lawmakers to strengthen Florida's gun safety laws. Instead, we saw them weakened by the passing of permitless carry. For most of 2024, Florida has led the nation in the number of mass shootings. While the numbers decreased across the country, our state saw an increase. By the end of the year, Florida had 32 mass shootings. Only two states had more. We owe it to our children and the citizens of this state to do better, to pass laws to make our neighborhoods and communities safer. This will not be accomplished by passing legislation such as open carry of firearms or allowing college students to carry weapons on campus, including the one where we have gathered here today. House Bill 31 would do so if passed. And we will not accomplish safety for our citizens by lowering the age to purchase rifles from 21 to 18. For this reason, we also object Senate Bill 94. Instead, we ask you to focus on life-saving bills, like Senator Polsky's, which would strengthen Florida's gun storage laws. Approximately 80% of school shooters obtain the weapon used to commit their crime from their own home or the home of a relative or friend. We must stop the easy access of weapons to those who wish to do harm. Sadly, the latest statistics tell us teen suicide has been on the rise. Approximately 2 million teens will attempt suicide this year. Research shows that secure storage of weapons is associated with a decrease of risk to children. Passing secure storage laws and increasing the penalties to those who break the law will save lives. In Palm... See, I'm... Sorry about that. Okay. So the last thing I just want to mention is gun violence prevention and intervention programs and the funding that was put in the budget last year was $2.5 million, and we would support that and an increase of those funds as well. And thank you so much for your time to address you today. Thank you.
Members, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next presenter will be Dr. Connie Sikowski. Getting better.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your service and for the opportunity to be here today. When I was a CNN hero, a major takeaway was that no child in our country should have to drop out of school because of family caregiving responsibilities. We now know that there are more than 5 million child caregivers in our country and more than 290,000 in public middle and high schools in Florida. This number exceeds children of all ages who are homeless or in foster care. Caregiving youth sacrifice their education, health, childhood, and well-being to provide care for a family member with a health condition. It's a growing population, and today, children assist often more than one person. They provide personal care and household management. The life of 12-year-old Anne changed when she and her mom were in a car accident. They were hit by a drunk driver, one with no insurance or assets. Anne was okay, but her mom was not. She was unable to work or walk. Her husband began a second job, so now Anne had to step up to the plate and assist her mom. Her grades fell, and her anger mounted. In contrast, Jimmy's single mom went to work early in the morning. His role in caring for his grandmother included dressing, feeding, and giving her medications. Sometimes it took longer, and he would miss the school bus, another day absent, and his grades also suffered. Our government provides resources and support for adult family caregivers. Why not also for caregiving youth? We believe this omission is a lack of knowledge. Healthcare, education, and child welfare are all involved. The Florida Caregiving Youth Act will define this population and establish a task force that can then develop and make recommendations for no-cost accommodations that others can provide, such as maybe extended time leave for homework during the night a child stays up caregiving. Our successful model of identification and support of caregiving youth has resulted in a 10-year-average high school graduation rate of 98.3%. Other caregiving youth in Florida also deserve help. This need in legislation can also have as an economic investment. Taxable earnings are higher among high school graduates. Teen pregnancy, crime, and disease, along with ultimate system dependency, are less. We respectfully ask for your support to make 2025 the year of the caregiving youth. They have earned and deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Next, we will hear from Sheila Jaffe, former president, National Organization of Women. Next, we'll hear from Linda Smith, Sierra Club Lakisahatchee Group.
Thank you. Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida, current Sierra Club Lakisahatchee Group Chair. I want to thank again Senator Harrell and co-introducer Bradley for Senate Bill 80, State Park Preservation Act. I am a little distressed when I see on the website that to date, there appears to be no companion bill. I sincerely hope that there is one in the wings waiting to be filed. You all remember the August release of the misguided and inappropriate Great Outdoors Initiative, which was opposed by Floridians and lawmakers across the political spectrum. Unfortunately, you know, if we don't get a companion bill, Senator Harrell's good work won't get anywhere. We need a House bill, and we need to make it veto-proof, which is going to be, hopefully, very easy to do. I have provided some talking points on Sierra Club's intent and issues for this legislative session. We need to protect our state parks into perpetuity. The Save Our Parks handout has some simple, easy-to-understand talking points about Sierra Club's stance and on the state parks. So now, back to talking trash. Last month, I started to speak about the incineration that burn our waste. Yes, it does burn our waste, but leaves 30% as toxic waste. I want to hammer home that the incinerators are not waste-to-energy plants; they are waste-of-energy plants. Our waste is turned to toxic ash and toxic air pollution while creating a very, very small amount of electricity. Building an incinerator is six times more costly than building a gas-fired power plant. If burning trash was an alternative way to create electricity, FPNL would already be doing it. The legislature and the governor signed into law SB 1764, allocating hundreds of millions of dollars to incinerator companies to expand, with local taxpayers tasked to match these funds. Trucking our waste hundreds of miles, purchasing more land, is much less expensive than incineration financially and environmentally. There have been many, many worthy organizations here today that deserve taxpayer dollars. Please just don't burn it. And if the Sierra Club believes landfills, recycling, and waste reduction is better than incineration, there must be something really wrong or stinky about incineration. Thank you for your time.
Members, any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much. The next presenter, Gil Smart.
No. Anna. Good afternoon, delegation. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gil Smart. I'm Policy Director for Friends of the Everglades. We were founded in 1969 by Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. We're headquartered about 45 minutes north of here in Stewart. We are concerned primarily with issues involving clean water, and as the name suggests, the Everglades itself. We're in the process of finalizing our legislative priorities for the year, and we'll make sure all of you get a copy when they are done. But I wanted to highlight two of them in particular today that you're likely to be hearing a lot about in the coming months. The first is our top priority, as it's been for years past, which has to do with the need that we believe the state of Florida needs to begin the process of acquiring additional land south of Lake Okeechobee to store water from the lake, to clean water from the lake, and to send that water south to the Everglades and Florida Bay, which desperately needs it. As you're likely aware, Lake Okeechobee has been deemed too full for too long by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, so the coastal estuaries are getting discharges. The St. Lucie, the Kalusahatchee, the Lake Worth Lagoon are all getting hammered by discharges. And just this past week, DEP confirmed, rather, a blue-green algae bloom in Port Salerno, Martin County. It's supposed to be too cold for that, but apparently, it's not. And I got an email last week from a guy who lives in Jupiter who said he took his grandson with him to his favorite fishing spot in Jupiter, and here came all this black plume of water from the north that they couldn't go fishing. It's not a local problem; it's a regional problem that affects all of South Florida. The state has been spending a significant amount of money on, you know, they use the term pumps and pipes, existing SERP projects, Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan projects, like the EAA reservoir. All this is good and necessary, but we know that even if and when all those projects are finished, it's not going to solve the problem completely. It's not going to eliminate discharges to what we call the northern estuaries. We need to eliminate those discharges. We need to eliminate that harm. It inflicts tremendous harm, not just on the ecological environment; it inflicts tremendous harm on the communities, on the businesses that rely on the water for their viability. This has been going on for decades. We keep... It seems we get closer and closer to a solution, and then, wham, we get hit again with discharges, as we're getting this year. These discharges could last through May. They could have a disastrous effect. Florida needs to do more. We're advocating for that. And just briefly, we're also going to be advocating for Senate Bill 80. I want to thank Senator Harrell again for filing that bill. You all, I'm sure, are well aware of the eruption of anger from the citizens of Florida when the plan to develop the state parks was revealed last year. I don't think I've ever seen anything quite like that. The citizens of Florida are demanding that something be done to prevent that type of development in their state parks. We are very supportive of legislative efforts to do that. I do believe Representative Snyder is supposed to be introducing the House bill, so I was going to reference that. He's not here. But thank you, Senator Harrell, for introducing Senate Bill 80. If we can be of any help in any way on that bill as the process moves forward, we'd certainly like to do that. And we certainly would like to be a resource on Everglades and clean water issues for all of you at any time. Please feel free to reach out to my organization. Thank you.
Members, any questions? Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned about south of the lake, but I keep hearing that a lot of the problems in the lake are coming in from the northern part and the Kissimmee area and Orlando. Are you... Do you have positions on those issues?
So, the primary issue with the water coming in from the north is that it's polluted. The Kissimmee Basin and the runoff essentially from Orlando all the way south carries all sorts of phosphorus and nitrogen, which is a huge problem for the lake. So, there are projects in the works, the Lake Okeechobee Watershed Restoration Project, or LORP, as it's called. There are plans to build a reservoir north of the lake. There are plans to do deep-well injections sites at the north of the lake. In fact, there's already one in operation. So, it is an issue. The storage is necessary all around the lake, but the problem is, the historic flow of the Everglades was, it sort of overlapped the bottom lip of the lake and just naturally flowed south. That's where the term "river of grass" comes from, right? It was as if it were a river. And so, that's the natural flow of the lake. And so, while we do need storage all around the lake, and there are plans to do that, we need... Everglades restoration involves... True Everglades restoration involves trying to reestablish the historic flow. And that's why we say what we need is land south of the lake, because that's where that water went historically until we showed up, you know...
But we're still there, so the storage flows...
Indeed, indeed.
You can't reverse certain things because...
Right, exactly. No, obviously, the towns aren't going away, that sort of thing, but, you know, land could be used differently.
Warmer.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker will be Dr. Deanna Smith. Albert. Deana Albert. My mistake. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Deanna Albert, clarify. I'm representing the Democratic Public Education Caucus of Florida, which I'm on the Executive Board, and also the Palm Beach Democratic Executive Committee, which I was Education Chair for five years, and my own LLC, Educational Solutions and Resources. I stand before you as a lifelong career educator of 46 years, across a broad spectrum, having been a teacher, a supervisor, mentor, school administrator, director, university professor, and consultant. I've become a social activist following two retirements, as education is critical to the well-being of civil and economic life. Therefore, I am deeply concerned about the onslaught of recent Florida legislation against public education, which has challenged academic freedom regarding how and what teachers can teach and how and what students can learn. Spring '24's legislative session made matters worse by facilitating religion and religious practices into public schools and completely ignoring that our Constitution supports separation of church and state and religious freedom for all. When HB 931 became law in July of '24, allowing public and charter schools to bring in shaklins who are not even formally trained as a form of support service to students, I became even more troubled, as you should be. I do applaud our Palm Beach County District Board members in disallowing this policy in our county schools. However, it is happening across Florida and in other states, and this trend is growing. It is obvious that our governor has chosen to make this decimation of public education his personal mantra. Along with attacks on factual history and the growth of book bans and censorship and the continued attacks against diversity, equity, and inclusion, we've seen the substantial rise of universal school vouchers with huge tax dollar funds going to private and charter schools who often teach religious practices as part of their curriculum. All these bills overreach historical norms, and we must push back hard. We must fight against the loss of civil rights and liberties and plans to indoctrinate our public school students using Christian religion as the core. This encroachment is aimed at the suppression of thought and speech for the primary purpose of maintaining control and the status quo of white supremacy. Unfortunately, hostility to democracy is deeply rooted within religious fanaticism and has taken hold in America despite our nation's unique faith protections. This encroachment is aimed at the suppression of thought and speech for the primary purpose of maintaining control and the status quo of white supremacy. Unfortunately, hostility to democracy is deeply rooted within religious fanaticism and has taken hold in America despite our nation's unique faith protections, which are sadly being eroded. We know the U.S. Constitution is the traditional law of the land. Within it lies the First Amendment, which guarantees freedom of religion, speech, press, assembly, and the right to petition our government. There is no room for theocracy in our American system, and it must be resisted. This is not a partisan issue. It is a constitutional issue. I am looking for other sponsors that would work with me on bills to push back on what is happening in public education, not only with religion, but with everything else. And anything that you want to do to work with me. I am a writer, and I'm willing to work with anyone who's willing to help me, of course, any party. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions? Thank you so much. Next presenter, Kevin Claridge.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address the delegation. As a former resident of Palm Beach County, it's great to be back and bring some new resources to the county to assist and protect the ecologically and economically marine resources along the Palm Beach County coast. My name is Kevin Claridge, and I serve as the Vice President of Moat Marine Laboratory sponsoring research and coastal policy programs. Unfortunately, our President/CEO, Dr. Michael Crosby sends his regrets, wasn't able to join us today. Some of the delegation I know is familiar with Moat Marine Laboratory, but just as a real quick overview, Moat is celebrating 70 years as one of the few remaining independent nonprofit marine research institutions. Moat Research Enterprise is diverse, with over 35 research units, including many very important to the Palm Beach County coastline and its residents, from corals and seagrass to manatees and biomedical advances to harmful algal blooms, as we were just hearing about. Moat is addressing critical and ocean coastal challenges with science-based solutions. Moat works on an international scale, but is Florida homegrown with its main campus in Sarasota and has nine locations across South Florida with over 40 PhD scientists, 300 employees, and 1,300 volunteers. And we're excited about our new 110,000-square-foot, 1 million-gallon aquarium in Sarasota. We hope some of you can come over and visit us soon when that opens later this year. I'm here to address you on four quick points. One, to introduce you to Moat Marine Laboratory. Thanks for that opportunity to come today. And two, to share some great news that will be neighbors soon. Thanks to some funding from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, we're working to construct a coral nursery at a new site in the northern geographic range of the Florida Coral Reef. We've been in great discussions and planning with MacArthur Beach State Park in the northern Palm Beach area, bringing the power of the latest, greatest coral restoration science and educators to Palm Beach County. We hope is just beginning by adding also the latest resilient seagrass science underway at Moat Marine Laboratory with many of its partners, including the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's Aquatic Preserve Program and the University of Florida, moving seagrass science ahead for restoration, which is so vital to the precious Lake Worth Lagoon and other coastal areas of the county. Third, to share our legislative priorities, which we provided to each of you, and would appreciate your support on the recreational fisheries ask, coral reefs, manatee rescue and re-vitalization, and critical hurricane recovery. And last, that we look forward to seeing you in Tallahassee and hope you're able to join us during the session on April 1st for Ocean's Day at the Old Capitol for the Moat reception to learn more about our cutting-edge research, marine research, and restoration programs underway now coming to Palm Beach County. Thank you again for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here. Please give our regards to Dr. Crosby. It's always a great opportunity to hear from him, but thank you for being here. Wanted to ask if you have worked with any of the folks over at Florida Atlantic University in the creation of the Office of the Ocean Economy, which is the legislation we passed last session, to help connect some of the dots in terms of what organizations, just like yours, are doing, but you may not know what other organizations are doing or how we can leverage all of the work that's being done? And would love to get your or Dr. Crosby's perspective on how that office can be helpful, because we want to ensure its success, and it's at its nascent stage where there's a lot of opportunity to, if we build it, they will come, type of resources. So just your thoughts on it, if you have any, and maybe an opportunity, my legislative aides are here, to create a meeting with the folks at Moat and see how we can make sure that you are connected with that office.
That's a great idea. Firstly, we have a lot of great partners, FAU, many of the campuses work very closely with a lot of their great scientists, and a lot, even the ones I'm mentioning here today, on coral and seagrass restoration, really moving some of that science ahead for the state of Florida. But there's a large partnership through the Florida Ocean Alliance that works together, brings a lot of the partners together that was helpful in that legislation and moving that piece ahead. But absolutely, Moat would love to play a bigger role in that, insisting on the East Coast a little bit as best as we can. We would love to be involved, so happy to make the connection today.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Next presenter, Rafael Clemente.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Rafael Clemente, and I represent the Quantum Foundation. Quantum has a longstanding history of impactful work in Palm Beach County focused on improving community well-being through initiatives that address critical needs. Quantum's new strategic focus on social determinants of health underscores its commitment to addressing the root causes of poor health outcomes, including conditions in which, I'm sorry, social determinants of health are the non-medical factors that influence health outcomes, including conditions in which people are born, grow, live, work, and age. These include housing, education, employment, social connections, and access to fresh food and healthcare. Through our Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy Division, we are working to revitalize Palm Beach County's neighborhoods of persistent poverty, places that have experienced generational poverty here in Palm Beach County. These are communities with immense potential, but also significant challenges. To further our mission, we are requesting funding from the legislature. The funds will support transformational efforts to focus on improvement without displacement, beginning in the Coleman Park neighborhood of West Palm Beach and expanding to include communities of concentrated poverty countywide. By leveraging this funding, we aim to attract private investment to multiply the impact of public dollars to ensure sustainable, long-term change. And we are seeking a sponsor for our request. To focus, this focus is particularly vital now. For example, in Coleman Park, residents face significant challenges, including a life expectancy that is 14 years shorter than the average of the rest of Palm Beach County. By addressing economic instability, housing needs, and public infrastructure, this initiative will help bridge the gap and create opportunities for health, prosperity, and improved quality of life. The initiative focuses on three priorities. First, mixed-use development for housing and commerce by prioritizing projects that combine affordable and workforce housing with ground-floor commercial spaces, creating vibrant, sustainable communities. Second, economic development and job creation through the redevelopment of underutilized commercial properties with the goal of attracting local businesses and stimulating long-term economic growth. And third, public space improvements that will make these neighborhoods more attractive, healthier places where residents can thrive. This program represents an opportunity to deliver meaningful change, and not just for Coleman Park, but for all communities of concentrated poverty throughout our county. By investing in this initiative, the state can help create thriving, resilient neighborhoods that reflect the very best of Florida. Thank you for your time today, and I look forward to answering any questions.
Members, any questions? See you none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We've got about 15 minutes left. We've got five more speakers left, so you can share that time, 15 minutes between you. The next one, the name's get harder, to Marichi Aria. I murdered that.
Hi, good afternoon. Happy New Year. So my name is Marichi Aria. I'm 20 years old. I'm a student at Lynn University, and I also have the privilege of being an intern for the Palm Beach County Voting Rights Coalition, where I have learned firsthand the importance of civic engagement and public service. As we're gathered here today, I reflect on how 2024 was a year of contrast, moments of progress and moments of division. It was a year that stirred up deep concerns, with political discourse often giving way to fear and even hatred. I could stand here and recount for you the many ways our rights and democracy have suffered, but instead I choose to look forward. I choose to be positive and optimistic about the future of our beautiful state of Florida, a state I deeply love and believe in. Today, I'm here to express my enthusiastic support for the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Florida Rights Voting Act, because this bill is a promise that our democracy will remain accessible, inclusive, and strong. The provisions of this bill will make voting easier and more equitable for every Floridian. It offers automatic voting registration, so interacting with the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles becomes an opportunity to ensure your voice is heard. It provides same-day voter registration and permanent vote-by-mail options, making the voting process simpler and more accessible. It also ensures that Floridian citizens who express themselves best in another language can fully participate in elections by expanding language access. Florida is a state of strong, dedicated citizens. We are people who care deeply about our families, our communities, and our shared future. Everyone deserves the right to express themselves through their vote, and that expression should be as easy and smooth as possible. By passing this bill, we honor the legacy of Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore, two courageous Floridians who gave their lives fighting for racial equality and voting rights. More importantly, we honor the promise of democracy, a government truly for and by the people. Thank you for your time and consideration. I urge you to support the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Voting Rights Act and make 2025 a year of progress and unity for our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presenter, Aubrey Harrington.
Thank you. My name, thank you. My name is Aubrey Harrington. I'm the Executive Director of the Locks Hedges River District in Jupiter, Florida. We are the wastewater utility. We do water reclamation, environmental education, river restoration, northern Palm Beach, southern Martin County. I'm here to keep it simple and short and sweet to support Senate Bill 80. I think it's a nonpartisan issue. We would be the wastewater provider, the utility provider for Jonathan Dixon State Park had that been developed as proposed. There are a number of problems that the proposed development would have created environmentally. We think that Senate Bill 80 is very intelligent. Our state parks are a sanctuary for native habitats, biodiversity. They contribute to the resilience and beauty of our state's landscapes. These wild landscapes deserve focus, sustained effort to ensure they continue to thrive and survive. We appreciate and encourage each of you to support Senate Bill 80, because we believe it will improve the notification and comment period for destruction of natural resources within state parks and minimize significant harm to natural resources within Florida state parks while providing the public with conservation-based, public outdoor recreation opportunities. Thank you for still being here. I do hope you'll support Senate Bill 80.
Thank you so much. Next presenter, Dr. Mitchell Kirschner.
Wow, that was a bit of a marathon so far, huh? Thank you for still being here. As there was a comic who once said, "If I knew I was going to live this long, I would have taken better care of myself." I stand here before you as a representative for the Florida Naturopathic Physicians Association. I'm here today to not ask for money, but ask for support and your awareness of who we are and what we hope to bring back to Florida. We have actually been here as a president in Florida since 1935. We've been legal to practice naturopathic medicine. For those who don't know what that is, it is a holistic integrative healthcare approach. We're not looking to rule anybody out, but to include everybody. And so what we wanted to offer, and one of our premises and principles of practicing naturopathic medicine, is prevention. We feel like it is more cost-effective and beneficial for patients to actually prevent disease rather than always have to treat it. In doing so, I give you a quick little definition, my own definition, of what is naturopathic medicine. It is the bridge between the knowledge of science and the wisdom of nature. For this, what we do is we integrate these kind of health cares into our practice, except we can't practice in Florida. Our ability to practice in Florida was removed in 1958. And as many of you may know at this point, because it was stated a couple times today, where the number of people moving to Florida is somewhere around 250,000 to 300,000 people a year, which leads us to somewhere between 20,000 and 30,000 primary care provisions shortages. We hope to fulfill on some of those. We have a lot of people who would like to move here, who would like to practice here in the state of Florida, but they can't because we're not licensed. So we do have representation in the House and the Senate. We don't have a bill number just yet. We had one last year, but Representative David Smith and Representative Senator Rodriguez will be carrying the bill and presenting it. But what I'm here today to do is to ask you to just be aware of who we are, what we stand to represent, and how we can benefit the people of Florida in our healthcare offerings. Again, what we're really wanting to do is to provide a way for people to have access to better healthcare. And again, our method of operation is let's do prevention, let's do holistic healthcare. So I'm also referred to as what is called a vitalistic naturopathic doctor. What that means is you can get vitamin D in a bottle, or we live in the sunshine state. I would actually prescribe for you to go outside after our session is complete and get some vitamin D. And this would be one of the things that I could prescribe as well. So again, all I'm asking for is for you to be aware of who we are, what we do, and when our bill comes up in March in Tallahassee, that you have a voice, that we carry that voice for the sake of the people in Florida. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Any questions, members? See you none. Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. I'm sure I must have heard the bill if it was, if it was on a committee agenda last session. Can you give me briefly, I know because everyone's tired, what does the bill do and what is the licensure that was taken away in the 50s? Can you explain that just briefly?
Yeah, in brief, I don't have all the specifics at the top of my fingers, but we had licensure. We had an ability to practice here in the state. Not only was our licensure revoked in 1958, but also it became illegal to practice naturopathic medicine in Florida. As it stands right now, there are 28 states in the country, including the District of Columbia, who do license us. We are primary care physicians. We go to four or five years of medical school, post a Bachelor of Science. The challenge with our bill was that we're working out some of the details with local other medical professions, and this is a matter of ironing out a couple of wrinkles, but it looks very promising to be moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Dr. Jean, what, Kevin? Dr. Jean, is Dr. Jean in the house? Okay. Peggy Bell.
Hi. I guess I'm a little bit appears when it comes to. Hi, thank you for allowing me to come and speak last minute like this. I'm on the board of the Palm Beach County Chapter of the Hearing Loss Association of America. We've been meeting, I've been on the board for about six years now. We've been meeting for almost 20 years, first in Delray Beach, and now we meet in Boynton Beach. The reason I'm here is not to speak specifically to any legislation or any funding request, but really to make you aware of this invisible disability, hearing loss, and the fact that in this county, it's really rare to find any Title II or Title III place of public accommodation that is compliant with the rule for effective communication. And so. but really to make you aware of this invisible disability, hearing loss, and the fact that in this county, it's really rare to find any Title II or Title III place of public accommodation that is compliant with the rule for effective communication. And so, people typically with hearing loss don't want to talk about the fact that they have hearing loss, they take, take seven or eight years to go and get hearing aids. The hearing aids do not work that well in public places, and there are technological remedies that are part of the ADA. And so, my question is, if, we, we meet every month, we're free support group meetings, how do we get the attention of hospital administrators, and retailers, and school administrators? How do we get the attention of people who don't know that they have a responsibility? If there's anything that we can do as a chapter, we have a robust group of people who are willing to volunteer and do education and help empower people, and that's basically my request, is just to, if we can help, if you can help us help other people, we'd be happy to do that. I think there are about one and a half, I don't know, maybe 300,000 people in Palm Beach County with hearing loss. And even if they have hearing aids or cochlear implants, they don't have a hearing loop system, or they don't have captioning, they don't have any assistive technology that is required by the ADA. Any questions about this situation, or any advice?
Any questions, members? Seeing none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. That wraps it up, people. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the coolness in the air. Nobody fell asleep on us this time. Representatives Kidmore moves to adjourn. So be it. Thank you.